Hey guys, welcome back to the YouTube channel Living the Country Life with Thomas Collins. We're back for the regular meeting, Otter Creek Town Hall. Let's get started. Quite a bit of people here. I think we're getting started.
Let the meeting come to order. First, we're going to start with the roll call. Teresa Granger present.
Zim Page present. Don Silvino present.
Gail Lynn present.
All right, now we can do the questions.
Mr. Warren?
Mr. Warren's present.
I'm here.
Okay.
Everybody rise and applaud.
The United States of America, and we are in the stands, one nation under God.
How are you, man?
Good, how are you?
Okay, buddy.
I'm good, thank you.
And the first thing we need to do is make a motion to add to the agenda paperwork for the bank to add a new signer onto the accounts. So each member will have to sign about each bank account. And removing Russell Meeks, Stuart Stewart, and Mary DeGroot, and adding Teresa Granger and Zim Page as signers. There's six accounts. And I'm going to pass it down so everybody can read what you're signing, and then I'll collect them afterwards. And we'll all sign on sheet, and the rest will get shredded. Take them on as you look it over. Right, has everyone looked over the minutes from the June 15th? Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to be a little bit of a signed documents to the bank tomorrow. Anybody second?
I seconded it, for the signed documents to go where they go.
All in favor of that? No opposed, unanimous? Has everyone looked over the minutes from the June 15th meeting?
I have.
Yes.
Has everyone... I make a motion to exempt the services.
Go ahead, second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous on that? And the May 16th meeting minutes, we do not have because they weren't done by the previous administration. So we can't address those. And I've given what financial reports we have. Unfortunately, we've been not handed down passwords or had access to any bank accounts because this has not been a smooth transition. And nobody's being helpful at all. So we're a little behind on that, and that's what we have. And I've made a list of the bills to be paid, as you can see. And the P&Ls are for what we have. So going forward, all those things will be in place. We now have access to the QuickBooks, which was gained today. And we've gotten water bills out. In spite of everybody not being cooperative or moving forward and getting through some, it'll just take a little bit longer. So if you see in there, that's what there is for the bills to be paid that have come in so far.
We need to be thankful to our two volunteers. They have given me great help in recovering this information and getting our office in order. They bring a lot of things to life. Deanna and Belinda have spent a lot of time trying to get this done. And Belinda has been very special in this process as well.
Very thankful for that. So do I hear a motion to approve the financial on the bills?
I don't think I should ever pay financial matters.
Have your second?
My second.
All in favor? Don?
Well, in the past, as you know, I've always put it, no, they weren't complete. And to me, you know, this is not complete, you know, for my satisfaction.
Okay.
Well, I understand that.
So we have three in favor. I'm in favor to none and Gail. And so Don has been opposed. And once I corrected, you will see that, and that's fine.
Yeah.
Because going forward, everything is going to be great.
And that's fine, I know. But right now...
I got you.
I understand that, but I understand that they were trying to appreciate your explanation.
So now we can move on to the department reports for administration. First of all, all those documents that were scanned, we have no idea where they were scanned to. So in the future, we'd like to move forward with putting all the ordinances online and where they should be and updating that. So we need to discover where they are. Again, nobody's being helpful for this transition, so that'll take a little bit more time to figure out where things are. It's been a rush this weekend and ready for this meeting and going through the large mess that's in that office. So just want to keep you updated that we're trying to figure that out. We've come across a lot of old office equipment. Numerous printers, laptops, other desktop computers that need to be disposed of. So I'd like to hear a motion when we dispose of this old equipment so we can get this office cleaned up.
Have we been able to get through these laptops and computers and issue the commission?
They will be disposed of properly, absolutely. So they will be gone through first and wiped clean before they're disposed of.
I think we should have a listing of, you know, all the devices that...
You would like a list of them all?
I think so, yes. I think it'd be appropriate.
No problem. We'll get that to you anyway. Okay, so we'll table that. And for maintenance, did you have anything for administration? For maintenance, do you have anything, Richard? I know you said we need new blades for the mower and new belts. And we also need to put signage out on that water plant because we're having a lot of people playing around over there. So we'll need some signage going in over there and possibly putting some kind of chain across it because apparently people are partying there.
We've put some fence posting across, Richard's been there.
Okay, and then we just need to get a sign for that area.
And I spoke to the realtor, trying to see if we're making some signs, and they are willing to back to me this week. Maybe just some basic signs for trespassing, taking off property, off last person.
Perfect. I don't think we have anything for Parks and Rec or Public Safety. Does anybody know anything about that?
I have that chance to listen.
Just checking. We can move on to the Water Department, which first off, I'd like to say that for the water bills, we'll be waiving the late fees for now until we figure everything out. We did get them mailed out and emailed out today. If anybody has any discrepancies they'd like to discuss, just come see either me or Deanna or Belinda, and we'll get it straightened out. There were a couple of bills that looked unusually large that we're going to have another look at before you might get them. So don't worry, there won't be late fees. And we'll get those done as soon as, again, we've been learning that system without any input from anybody. And we also have a status of lightning hitting a wellhead. There was a claim put in, the first email I saw about was July 28th of 2022. They've been asking for an update since that time monthly. And the clerk has not provided any confirmation to them, July 28th, 2022. They put in a claim for it.
Not up in the rap. We took a strike on the panel board to control the line two.
I have all the stuff printed out, so if we could get together on that and figure it out. They need the invoices and all the information to pay the claim, and they've been trying to get hold of that information since July 28th, 2022, once a month with no response. So that needs to be looked into this week.
I'll work with the vendors that they use and see if they can invoice us family.
Do you have anything else on water?
Yes, exactly. A few things on water. Before we go too far down the road, I just wanted to make a note about the law firm, Douglas and Douglas. She's not going to be able to make it tonight. But we did have an emergency vote, and we'd like to know the results of it, if you could announce the votes of that.
Absolutely. So we have a lawsuit pending and need a response in. So we've had to retain a lawyer for the lawsuit at the last minute. So we had an emergency vote, and we had three votes yes, being myself, Gail, and Zim. And I had no response from Don and Russell on that. So we moved forward with the three votes and retained the lawyer Douglas and Douglas to represent the town in the lawsuit. It's an emergency vote, the response was needed.
That doesn't sound right to me to vote on something without meeting the...
It was emailed to all members. Unfortunately...
She asked to vote an email. The deadlines, the deadline is two weeks. If we don't reply to this response by Thursday, Tuesday, September 10th, we lose everything in the lawsuit. The town loses everything in the lawsuit. And it's an automatic exception, it's an automatic, we plead guilty to everything in return. If we do not, it's automatic, you know, we can't hit it off in a day to make that response.
Okay, so we have some order here. Mr. Warren, would you like to comment on this? Because we were under a deadline, and the previous administration failed to do what they needed to do.
There's probably a question there with an emergency, and I would think the mayor, whether with that, probably has the ability to add. But what you might want, is it small or a vote, or gratifying the activity of our mayor, or a bunch of those emergency services, the enhancement, that way it's sort of, this is valid.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the fact that we've equipped our law firm to represent us in the lawsuit that is pending now. I'll make a motion to do that. Is anybody second? I believe your second's over. The...
I seconded that when we did that.
And there was back to the mayor?
Yes.
Lord, you had a meeting.
No, there was not a meeting. There was a meeting going out about this right here. This is something that everyone's been asking about this lawsuit. And everything's been hidden for a while.
Everyone was emailed that. It's also sitting in front of me.
The previous mayor's been hiding this, and the previous clerk has been hiding this, and everyone's knew about this.
I pointed it. You had a... Took a vote.
We submitted it, we submitted it, but we didn't know.
With all the information included, now we just redid the vote, and we have three, four, and let the record show that Don is against it. Okay, so you're voting against it?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, just want to make sure we had that on the record clearly.
Pardon?
I just want to make sure it's on record clearly.
On the board of this. We have quite a bit here to cover this guy. We'll start with plant number two over here. The number one motor pump has busted the drive shaft last year, and it was repaired under warranty. Now, the motor is, same motor is having some very, it's very unusual. It's acting completely different than the other two. It makes this noise like it's clinging, like it's trying to come apart. So we've shut that down, it's offline, there are people in two pumps right now. We do have a call in to people who installed everything, who interfered, it's not a warranty. And they will be spitting some dust to the guy that does working services, these motors after warranty. And he should be getting touch of us this week as well. Stacey's on it.
My bad.
Water pump number two, that's the status on that one. Before I go any further, but I do want to make sure that you know is that Richard is on top of this water system and has done excellent job. And he has followed through with his duties and responsibilities, and he's on top of all this stuff. He's known in my heart, and he recognized, he's once recognized this noise by his routine checking, has caught that motor. This motor, if it blows apart, this motor costs $50,000 to fix. So we've got to get it caught now, fix it once minimum. And if it wasn't for Richard Cassin this, this motor could cost us ten thousand dollars on that one.
Is this your assessment or is it assessment of the water?
Man, like Lani's?
Lani as well.
That is not Lani's assessment.
Lani's assessment is a call in and out. Which we call.
Doesn't he do reports or anything? Like something like that?
He does.
He gets reports, like that won't be known.
I'm sure that he does. I'm sure he's known before.
He should have one too. You know, he only has all this information that's like...
This isn't, this isn't your assessment or...
Okay, we're getting off.
And that's perfect.
Are we?
Yes, we are.
If we're going back and forth, we are.
This is an automated canal part of the plant.
You would like reports from the manufacturer?
I'd like to know that the assessment is done by a competent person.
Well, absolutely.
Yeah.
The main is coming, this would be a test, just to look at it and give us an assessment.
Yeah, he has to come out.
In the meantime, turn it off, take it offline so it doesn't go itself up.
Don, I can guarantee you that everything here will be transparent, and you will get reports when things are done, but we can't...
After the fact.
Hold on, Don. Don't interrupt me, please. I'm not interrupting you. When they are done, you will get them, but we can't have them before he comes out. I'm not hiding anything from anybody. Okay, well, I just want you to know. When they're done, you will get them, okay?
Okay, then we can't, I can't take the action on one of them.
I believe he was just briefing you.
We're not asking for action. We're just keeping you updated on what's happened.
Okay, I'll, I just got them, I appreciate that.
Keeping you updated, we are working, someone to give this to everyone.
All right.
Making his concrete assessments.
It's a concrete fact, that owner is down for all.
Stay tuned.
Can you touch base on what the problem is, if it's a reoccurring problems in? You said you would take questions. I don't want to be out of turn, but...
This does not exclude the reoccurring thing. It had a problem before, but this problem seems to be difficult. To avoid, it escalated, we stopped, took it off line, until somebody could get here with a professional opinion on what to do with it. And, all right, so that's plant number two. Plant number one has, we bought motors last year, and they were just under $5,000 a piece. And the one motor was blew apart, blew up. Took it offline, sent it back for repair. The manufacturer fixed it and sent it back. Before it could get back here, the second pump that they bought was installed and blew apart. And now we're sending that one back, and then sent back for repair. And in the meantime, the one they sent us back here now is being reinstalled, and it's blown apart.
That's the one I remember. That's the problem I remember, reoccurring.
That's the one's reoccurring. And it has, the manufacturer says that they repaired the first one. And now it's obvious it's not a manufacturer problem, it's the installation problem. We've sent pictures, we've talked to the expert for the treatment system, has been in communication with him, clearly the problem. And their assessment of it is, and the man was one of yours, he's not, he can't make it as well. It's kind of caused some of our, we haven't the time, everybody knows this, we're about to meet him tonight. But their assessment is that the lines, the flows were not correctly operated, which we got them. The flows fixed, Richard got it fixed, the flows, and working went wrong, and he was there. And got that corrected. The pipes have some leaks in them, so these high-pressure pumps have such a suction in the vacuum that they suck, you know, old type of pinholes, sucks in a massive amount of air when it's under pressure. And the lines that were previously used, the one to these pumps, the old pumps that we had, that were replaced with three-inch lines, and then we reduced to two inches.
I wonder why?
And the manufacturer says these lines need to be recommended to be four-inch lines to bring that water up to them. So they actually have plenty of water flow, and it reduces them just that way, goes into the pump, so there's plenty of water with no leaks in it. And plenty of, Richard lives, looked at it, and dug up the pipes, and we've seen what it's going to take to put these lines back in there. But we can't hook them up and do it with the other pumps or back. Now, the manufacturer says they want, it's about $3,000 a piece to fix these motors to go back. And here's our problem, is now we have an obligation to the pilot company of this water system. They've got $100,000 sitting there. It can't work because our town's not pumping. And we've got to finally get these back online.
Can't you go after the installer? Or if the manufacturer's saying it's the installer, can't you go after the installer? Who was the installer?
Russell Meeks installed the motors and did the pump.
I thought that he kind of supervised it and it was done by the firm that rebuilt them.
No, they made it clear that Russell Meeks did it.
Pardon?
They made it clear that Russell Meeks.
Sam?
They are willing to kind of say, if...
Russell did hire a company out of Fanny Springs. That's all the new grade pipe to those pumps.
Okay. I don't know, I wasn't there. You know, I've got locked out, I worked for three years, and that's... Well, it's good, the way the problem is happening now, if you go back and see it, because I'm not going back in the time of this day. That's a fact. So we've got to get the money for the pumps, and we, do we need to search and try to find outside resources for the pumps? Or maybe, or we, we don't even have the talent to cover it. There's a bank account, we don't even know what's his bank account to cover the purposes, to cover the purposes.
Since you were locked out, would you be willing to let the residents in? If you're schedule a time for the residents to see what all of this looks like?
I believe they have opened the pumps up at the well, the water plants up to the pumps in the past. Yeah, we can have a decent amount of time, if people come and see the difference. Yeah, from the old to the new and what's going on today. If anybody wants to go, set a time.
You set a time, I'll be here.
Is it okay that we do that?
Okay. I mean, everything should be transparent, should it not?
No, I...
Should have always been transparent.
I will be, I can, we can meet here, we'll call a workshop, because that way we have another council on the town, we're within the guidelines, the rules, state sunshine. And we'll go to plant one and go to plant two, nine of them.
So what is that timeframe to get those motors repaired?
The repair process is going to take a week or two, and there's the... I want to seek out a little bit more because speaking with the two water professionals that we're using, they're recommending that we don't direct line these straight into these filters. We need to run them through a baffle system that maintains pressure. So that was the other side of the pumps. The pumps are starving water and they're sucking air, so they're blowing themselves apart. But not like that, they're pushing constant pressure, gets the filter to push the way through, constantly pushing under pressure without, without stopping. Yeah, they're doing it, but it's only going to go somewhere on the front. Which side of this problem caused it to happen? We don't know if it's the supply line or it's the discharge line that's caused this backflow pressure in the pumps. And the baffle system is nothing more than some well tanks, like wells with baffles that holds water pressure. You well up the house, you turn the pump on, it builds up pressure, you get water pressure, you turn it off. It gives the motors a chance to stop, take a break, until the water pressure comes back down, and then you come on and build the pressure back up. And then turn it, it does the same thing over there through the process. That keeps it from burning up, giving the motors a chance to stop the high pressure. And the dead pressure straight ahead, you know, it's probably running at head pressure of 90 to 100 pounds PSI. And with a baffle system, it's only running 60 PSI. So it's a lot less work on the pumps.
Yeah, so take the time and do the research and make sure we get them right. And then if we have to have a special meeting, if it's a time critical to get it done, we will do that.
I just think it's important that we look at this process because we don't want this happening again.
Correct. We don't have any...
Workshops, actually, we have a meeting.
Workshop?
Some general workshops, we have to have a meeting.
All right.
We can put the notice up, Tuesday or tomorrow.
That's it. Does any council want to get into the timeline? Come see the, everybody wants to work with? Would you like to come up?
No, I haven't.
I will do what I'm looking at. I think you should have Trayman doing his work and his assessments rather than some shade tree mechanic or whatever you want.
That's true.
What it's called is...
If you call me a street mechanic, I have 35 years as a street mechanic.
Okay, we're getting off course again. Yes, we're not going to have arguments, go back and forth. He's not talking about doing, are you speaking over me?
No, I'm not.
That's what I'm hearing. That's what I'm hearing.
If you want to hear that, that's what they're gonna hear.
Okay, well then, he's talking about taking everybody through the look at it, not doing any work, correct? Okay.
For tomorrow?
Yeah, that's all we were talking about, was it not?
Well, he's been talking about all of this work and then gives...
Okay, we're on different subjects. We're on different subjects. He's talking about taking people through it.
Well, I'm certainly...
I understand what you're saying. I'm just letting you know that we're on two different subjects.
I don't want to be argumentative, but...
Mr. Warren, what is your opinion on this about walking through there if there needs to be a seven day notice? Yes, sir. Okay, yeah.
Thank you, sir. So tomorrow morning, nine o'clock, we'll be here.
Anybody who wants to go? For observation. Is there anything else on the water?
That was the main thing.
Okay, and for old business about the town clerk position. This week, we'll be working on writing up the description because we've been a little bit behind with dealing with the bills and the more important things. So the next important thing is getting that done to get it listed. Hopefully, we can get that in the newspaper this coming week. Just so everybody knows, we are accepting resumes. You don't have to wait for the ad to come out to put in your resume. You can drop it in the box. You can email it to us, autarcreektownha@felsouth.net. Yes, it will also be listed online on the Florida State site. And if you know anybody who's interested, let them know. We're accepting the resumes now. Okay, now we can move on to new business. The first thing we need to talk about is the assignment of the one year term to the one seat of the newly elected council.
What would be the question on that?
We need to assign that to one of the seats because it was that other seat that needs to get back in line with the three and two. So it needs to be assigned to one of the newly...